Entertaining motion to come out of closed session?
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion on Mr. Collins to have a second?
A second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Case of certification resolution, whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convene the closed session this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and on a motion to close the meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas, section two point two thirty seven eleven D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the board supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. And we went under A one personnel. Now therefore be resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certify certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which certification applies. And all such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was committed for and heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which certification applies. I will ask you all to certify as well from Mr. Horton.
I so certify.
Mr. Early?
I so certify.
Mr. Collins?
I so certify.
Mr. Bryant?
I so certify.
Mr. Moore?
I so certify.
And I so certify. And Mr. Horton is joining us by phone because he is away this time this election day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just note that Mr. Horton's participation is pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two thirty seven oh eight point three subsection B two.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, I'll have a presentation by Senator Bill Stanley.
Invitation, please.
Oh, sorry. Hold on just one second. I gotta, I gotta step ahead. Next on the agenda is the invocation pledge. Mr. Bryant, if you'll lead us, please.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you once again for allowing us to be here. God, we just ask you to help us to make good decisions for the county and the citizens, and we just thank you for it all, in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And justice for all.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Stanley, Senator Bill Stanley, if you want to come up for the presentation, and we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors here. There are two very important things, or much more important than anything we do in the General Assembly, and that is God and country. So I appreciate not only your invocation and our pledged allegiance, pledge allegiance, which we do fewer and fewer unfortunately, but also as I look to our seal here in the County of Carroll to see that God we trust always and still someone like me, who is forced to go to the liberal bastion of Richmond on occasion and have people that don't believe we should be able to pray in the way that we do, and also recognize how great this nation is. Part of what we do in government is that not only do we try to make a difference in the world, we try to do something that that leaves a mark, an impression, changes a life. And we are elected, I'm looking at elected board, and we strive to do that every day, but there are so many people in our local governments who every day, day in and day out, serve our community, do what's right, make a difference, and leave a mark. And Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm here to recognize one of those great employees that you all have had. Who has, as I just found out, has retired, as I said, he is paroled from service. And he, and I asked him, and I said, you know, give me some pointers, what do you do when you retire? And he told me these great stories about waking up at nine, sitting on the porch with a cup of coffee, and pitting. One of the most amazing things I heard from this short conversation I had with him is that he spends a lot of time on Facebook. And I thought that was a kid thing, but you know, when you're retired, you can do what you need to do. And for such a valuable member of not only this government, but this community, I thought it necessary that the Commonwealth of Virginia recognized this fine gentleman for all that he did. And so in the Virginia State Senate this year, in the beginning of session, on January eighteenth in twenty twenty four, we, the Senate, passed unanimously a resolution called Senate Resolution Number Four commending Terry Woods. And I have it here, and I'd like to present that with your permission to Mr. Terry Woods, who I believe is in the audience, or someone was telling me that was him.
Yes, sir, please do.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I may read the commendation that the Senate Resolution Number Four passed with unanimous support. I'll hold this here. Whereas Terry Woods, the Chief Animal Control Officer of Carroll County, retired in twenty twenty three after a long and distinguished career lasting more than thirty four years. And whereas Terry Woods graduated from Carroll County High School and stayed at Cardinal Criminal Justice Academy, he began serving as the Chief Animal Control Officer of Carroll County in May of nineteen eighty nine, and became a respected authority on animal control throughout the region and the Commonwealth. And whereas over the years Terry Woods worked with local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies to investigate reports of animal cruelty, and he achieved numerous animal cruelty convictions. He was also a member of the Virginia Animal Control Association for more than a decade. And whereas, the animal control officer in the region frequently contacted Terry Woods for advice on handling specific animal welfare issues, and during his tenure, other localities often sent their animal control officers to be trained here in Carroll County. And whereas Terry Woods is a tireless advocate for animals, and he led efforts to change the laws on puppy mills here in the Commonwealth of Virginia and received an award for his work to end animal fighting. And whereas, among the many other accolades, Terry Woods was selected as nineteen ninety eight Animal Control Officer of the Year by the Virginia Animal Control Association for developing procedures related to large animals involved in accidents. And whereas Terry Woods also received the A Clark Slaymaker Award from the Virginia Environmental Health Association, and awards from the Carroll County Board of Supervisors, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the Virginia State Police, and many others. And whereas, outside of his career, Terry Woods was an active member in the community and supported the local Boy Scouts troop. Now therefore it be resolved by the Senate of Virginia that Terry Woods, Chief Animal Control Officer of Carroll County, hereby be commended on the occasion of his retirement as Chief Animal Control Officer. And be it resolved further that the clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Terry Woods as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's admiration for his commitment to animal welfare and contributions to the Carroll County community. Members of this Board of Supervisors, I have also taken a very strong concern for companion animal welfare. And through the halls of Richmond, I can tell you that the name Terry Woods is well known. And he set the stage for what now is some of the strongest companion animal protections here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And with the honor vested in me in the Commonwealth of Virginia, tonight I prepare, we prepared and present this to you, the Senate commendation that I just read on your retirement. Congratulations, Mr. Woods, you're a fine virgin. We really appreciate you. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Great to see y'all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, every day.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda, Freeze Community Center. All right, so you. There y'all. Sure.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
While Brian's passing that out, I'll give you just a little information. Basically, a whole new board kind of started last fall, just a couple of members or members that have been on the board. With kids or young people that were in the sports program at Freeze or were involved there. And we hear stories every day of what a boom in place the Freeze Community Center used to be. There was golf, bowling games, there was all kinds of sports. Any kid that didn't have a safe place to go had the Freeze Community Center to go and to play basketball, ask for adult supervision in their life. There's a swimming pool, there's a senior citizen program that meets one day a week to play bingo. So we're trying to restore all of the things in that building and all of those programs for the community. It's just a lot. We're kind of overwhelmed with all of the needs. We've worked on an annual budget that's around ninety thousand dollars to operate the sports program, the pool, the senior program, just keep the light bill and things paid. Hills trucking really helps with the heat in the building and provides cold. So we just wanted to reach out to you guys and if you have input or ideas or things that you need us to know or to work on or things that you think would benefit Carroll County citizens. Myself and Caitlin and Brian all live in Carroll County. Lots of the kids that come to the, to the community center from the Gladeville area and from the Bone area are Carroll County folks. So even though it's located in Grayson County, lots of folks that use the sports and use the pool are Carroll County. But we need your help. It's more than we can manage through fundraisers. We're doing a fundraiser almost every weekend of some form. And we have about seventeen thousand dollars. When we started, I think we had about five hundred dollars. So we are working hard and doing lots of fundraisers. Sessions at every bowling game. We're selling donuts this Saturday, so if anybody needs donuts, come to the Freeze office. But just wanted to reach out to you guys and let you know what we're trying to do, seek out any info, seek out any ideas. I don't know if you guys have something else?
You know, well, the board, I'm not a board, I'm kind of a advisor. But they're all volunteers and they all have full time jobs. It's hard, you know, to fund raise a hand. So, you know, we need info, you know, which direction to go. You know, like I said, we're all volunteers, we wanna, you know, but we can be anything. And we got, we sent Mike to thank you, and y'all can tell us or do, you know, anything. And you've got our email, we'll, any questions. You know, I've invited Mike to come and look at the field, we're gonna line that up, and anybody else as well.
Is the pool open up now?
It's gonna be open twenty.
The twenty fourth. We've worked on it the last couple of weekends, and Saturday we hope to fill it up with water and get the chemicals balanced in the next couple of weeks. There's a few mechanic, you know, a few things we had to do to work on to make it safe there. But yeah, we're planning on opening.
Are you trying to put the bowling and everything back into?
The bowling, yes, there's.
We got foreign problems.
Right. You just need money, you just need the money to do it. Yeah.
It just ain't been maintained, you know. So we're trying, that's what we're trying to figure out, how maintain the word. We don't have to have fundraisers to fix a building. You know, we need to have fundraisers to help the kids. We do have special needs kids, you know, I have one, and they volunteer and a whole lot of them.
The bowling alley is actually in okay shape, but there's asbestos on the plumbing pipes that are in the ceiling of the bowling alley. And so we've got to figure out a way to cover those pipes, you know, do we just put a draw seal on, do we just box in the pipes? If we can cover the pipes, then we can have people in that area. And the bowling alley is not in bad shape. It's just making that safe to be in that area. And we had a lot of interest. A lot of people have told us about the bowling lanes that used to be there and the kids that earned the money for setting up the pens and so there's a lot of interest in that. Honestly, we're just trying to keep the sports program alive right now. Kids pay thirty dollars to play, and that barely covers their t-shirt and their trophy. We had about five thousand dollars in new football helmets last year in the fall, which basically drained the account because those needed replacing. They couldn't be used anymore. And the Freeze kids use what they've got. They use equipment until it absolutely can't be used anymore. This year we had to buy a new set of catching gear for one of the baseball teams because the other wouldn't all work out. It's not that they won't nail Charlie, it's if the straps don't work and it don't fit, then we have to do something. Right now we have two baseball and two softball teams going, and we're taking registrations for catchers, pitch, and t-ball, which will be starting in June. So we have a lot of basketball teams going, so just keeping the sport, taking our main focus, and now we're getting ready to open the pool. So we're, you know, we're nervous taking advantage of that with the relatives who haven't been able to raise, but we're also, you know, our community's been good to support us, and we're all willing to work constantly, and could station so big, good at the eighth grade games, so. But any ideas or feedback, we'd like to get the entire thing working again, everything going to bowling.
Okay. So you want else, any more questions, bro?
We left your emails, you can, you know, email, we'll respond or whatever.
Okay. Thank you for coming. We'll get my thing. We'll discuss it some more and.
Thank you for what you're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda will be the Planning Commission Presentation and Amendments.
For anybody who doesn't know me, I'm Gavin Blevins. I'm the Planning Director for the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission. So this was my project to do the comprehensive plan amendment. You all had a thorough and in-depth comprehensive plan created in twenty ten. So I was scoped to do an amendment, basically evaluate your comprehensive plan from twenty ten, see where you are, make sure that it's still relevant to the county's efforts and where you are today, and to amend the document as necessary to. Three, need to be, the Planning Commission and I went through it pretty thoroughly over the last year or so. I've got a basic synopsis of kind of what we did that I imagine you'll open a public hearing, and then I'll be more than happy to come back and answer any questions that you have following into public comments. I do have a complete version here that y'all can have on file with additional copies of the cover page. So you all can have redundant originals if you would like to have that. But I'll give you a synopsis of what we did. Basically, main things were we updated the plan design layout, including the theme colors, which match your current brand. So I thought that was important to do. We modernized the document, so all of the search terms, that all functions correctly. All the table of contents function, we've got to talk through the document. It was designed in a way that you can put it on your website, it can be available to anybody. You could search through the document using different terminologies. All the pictures, tables, figures, they're all captured, so you can click through them. It's a, it was two hundred and ninety something page document when I got ahold of it. It's still over two hundred pages. So for it to be usable to the general public, it needs to be functional and be able to quickly get through it to get the information. The Planning District Commission did run an analysis of your twenty ten parcel analysis conducted that was planning works did now. It still is very much relevant and within a margin of error of about one percent, so we left it as it was. Based on the data that existed. We updated all the demographic information in chapter two, no major changes there. All the trends are pretty much as they were. Existing trends continue with your aging population. Population in migration to the magisterial districts of Bull and Fork and Pine Creek were significant. Median population age trended from about thirty nine in nineteen ninety to forty eight in twenty twenty one, so that gives you an idea of how that population trend is moving. MRPDC completed an updated land use study, maps three through six, give you that, so you can kind of reference back to those. And I'll give you all that information there. Otherwise, most of the principles in the land used to development chapter are pretty much the same. Themes one, three, fives that are in the introductory chapter are very much relevant today as they were in twenty ten. Employment, unemployment, labor force, all the stuff in your economics chapter has been updated. Significant entries for tourism were included as you all sort of continue to protect your agriculture, move towards economic, economic generators that function with tourism and your agriculture to protect both and generate revenue. You've also got a lot of in-migration from urban areas, and those folks aren't coming here for the agriculture that you have and the agritourism that is, that is here. Household, family, housing conditions, all that stuff was updated. No major changes there. A little bit more information on, on housing was provided as far as ADA accessibility, because you do have that aging population. Temperatures, nature, and community remains very much similar. A little bit of extra information was added for signage, wayfinding, longevity type characteristics, handicap accessibility you can, and kind of based on your environmental design. As things move, the more expensive are racially, the more you can kind of design your areas to be more friendly and less prone to crime, the better. This is passive activities instead of active activity on the back end. Chapter seven is your facilities and finance. This is very much the same as well. A lot of the same principles apply to how you're conducting your business. Transportation chapter was actually separated from your facilities and finance previously. And this went through Virginia VDOT review, so it includes all their six-year programs and all of, all their various programs, their plans, so they have done that review and approval. Implementation chapter went through some minor adjustments. We did a little bit of work on the work plan, split that up as a separate appendix, so y'all can adjust and track that separately. And parts of the original land use suitability analysis have been removed and put as an appendix as well. So those are basically utilized for research at this point, but leaving them in the document as they were just sort of clutters up the functionality of the document. But that covers most of the original document and what we have adjusted. I think most people have probably seen what it looks like, but it is still quite large. And it's two-sided, so it's, it's big to get through. But if y'all have any immediate questions, I'm happy to take those. Otherwise, I'll, I'll sit down, and hopefully the Planning Commission members here are shaking their heads. Yes.
I do have one question. The median population age, that's countywide, right? Not just.
It is countywide, yes. Just the, the notes with those two magisterial districts is that they do have a, a higher population than the other magisterial districts, as far as that demographic change.
I want to commend you on the work that you do. You've done an excellent job in the Planning Commission as well. I want to thank each and every one of them for the effort and time that they put into making this, having it come to fruition. Thank you.
Anything else? I'll sit down.
Everybody else have anything?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I, if I could just have a little floor for just one moment, just to add a few comments. The, as Mr. Early pointed out, the Planning Commission and Gavin have worked really hard on this. And prepared what I think is a really strong update to the, to the comp plan. Code of Virginia requires that it be reviewed every five years, so we were, we were past due, but, but this is, has been a good update. The Planning Commission made a recommendation at its last meeting to recommend this ordinance or this, this comp plan approval to the, to the Board of Supervisors as amended. The code requires both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors to hold public hearings. The Planning Commission held its public hearing at its last meeting, and so the recommendation now before this board would be to, if you are so inclined to advertise for a public hearing, hold a public hearing, and then approve the comp plan updates.
I think we need to go ahead and put that on the agenda and advertise for the public hearing.
Yes, we can schedule for the next meeting.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Mr. Durbin, do you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next on the agenda, citizens' time, everybody sign up, just, okay. And next on the agenda is the minutes. Entertaining motion to approve A, B, C, and D together, or we can approve them separate?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of A, B, C, and D all together.
Okay, have a motion. Mr. Moore to have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Entertaining motion, consent calendar invoices A and B, we can do, entertain a motion, do those together or separate?
I'll make a motion that we, that we approve the consent calendar A and B together.
Invoices A and B together? Okay, have that motion to have a second? Oh, we didn't do the, we would jump to that, okay.
That's all right, we'll go to the motion for that.
I'm sorry. Yeah, a second. This for the consent counter, correct?
Yes. His motion was A and B for the invoice.
Okay, so we need to back up to the consent counter.
Oh.
Sorry. Entertaining motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Start the voting, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that's my fault. Next, it would be the entertaining motion to approve the invoices A and B. Do you want to make that motion again, Mr. Horton?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, start the voting, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda is new business.
Yeah, I've got a couple of statements to read since we're going to be dealing with the school budget and the Sheriff's Department. Today's discussion involves the county budget. This discussion may include funding for the Carroll County School Board, as many of you know. I have a position of employment with the Carroll County School Board with regard to the proposed funding of the school. Proposed funding would affect the entire school system generally and not myself individually. And as a consequence, I am a member of a group of three or more individuals who are employed with the Carroll County School Board, similarly affected by the decision of proposed funding, therefore in this situation, the expectations of the Virginia State, the exception to the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act via Code Section two point two dash three one one two B one applies to this situation in compliance with that section. Hereby declare that I am able to participate in this discussion, voting on this topic fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. And also, as many of you also aware, I serve as an unpaid volunteer position with Carroll County Sheriff's Office. Because I receive no compensation from the Sheriff's Office, the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act does not apply. Want to assure the public that I can participate in consideration of this matter fairly and objectively and in the public interest.
Okay, uh, so I will entertain a motion for the approval of the FY twenty-five school budget.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Mr. Collins, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horton? Okay, we'll start the voting with, uh, Mr. Early? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the FY twenty-five county budget. I entertain a motion to accept it?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Mr. Horton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, I'll start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, uh, be the, uh, entertain a motion to accept the CIP plan approval?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Mr. Moore, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda is old business, uh, we have the six-year road plan draft resolution of support that you got in your packet. So I'll make a motion to accept this.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Moore to have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, I'll start the vote with, uh, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda will be more member comments. I'll start with you, Mr. Horton.
Uh, just want to apolo- apologize that, uh, I'm not able to be there tonight, uh, just, uh, out of my hands right now, but I appreciate everything and all the hard work that, uh, everybody's done into this budget and, uh, looking into all the finances for the county for the upcoming year. And just want to tell you thank you for everybody's hard work and look forward to a great year.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all the staff and, uh, uh, the fellow board members and, uh, uh, just, uh, appreciate everybody's good work and, uh, uh, thanking for it.
Mr. Collins?
I would echo what these two gentlemen had to say and just to add to that, that, uh, Greg, we've got you and your family in our prayers, and Tracy, you and your family in our prayers, you're both dealing with a lot right now. We just appreciate the commitment that you have and families first, and we appreciate you putting them first.
Mr. Early? Mr. Early?
Uh, a quick question, the, the vote that we took on the six-year road plan, was that a vote in support of the resolution?
Y- yes.
Okay. I missed that, sorry. Uh, the only thing I have to bring up is, uh, our trash service throughout the county.
The GFL, provided by GFL. Uh, they continue to drop roads, uh, and house- households within the county because suddenly they can't access them and they've been accessing them for years. Uh, they claim they don't have a place to turn around, uh, wandering in particular Nursery Road in my district. There's about six houses out there that aren't gonna be served now, they, they're asking them to drag their spirits trash cans about a mile out to, uh, six-thirty-eight, uh, which is unacceptable. Now, they all still playing, and I spoke with Jerry, I guess he's the signature, right?
Hey, manages the operation.
Yeah, I know he's a hometown boy. But anyhow, uh, you know, they, they claim that, uh, VDOT hasn't provided turnarounds at the end of state maintenance, which, uh, Dave, I don't think turnarounds are required at the end of state maintenance, are they? When possible, but you don't have to. Well, they don't have any places to turn around, so maybe, uh, if you can put turnarounds at the end of state maintenance on these roads, that would make it a little bit easier on the people to get their trash out to where their lives would pick up. And I know Mike is beginning with them, I just wait to look at some of these roads, but I'm very proud of the areas in the county that don't have any services are getting lots of services, so. I ask the administration here to please try to do whatever we can possibly do to keep the people in lower floor, Pine Creek, and all the other districts served. With trash picked up. And also just want to thank the staff who are playing and this board for their hard work. And the Planning Commission, again, I've worked with them and, uh, they've done a fantastic job on the comp plan, and we still got work to do. So, that's all, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add to that, what?
Sure.
Mr. Early said, we've had same thing happen in our district. We've had roads dropped that I'm driving a school bus down every day. So, I mean, you know, we've got people that are struggling to get their trash taken care of, so we need to do something about it. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
I do have one question on that. Were they already getting the service to their house and now it's just all of a sudden changed?
Yes, uh, Nursery Road, they were actually, the, the trash truck was going beyond the state maintenance sign and going into somebody's driveway, driveway and turnaround where they had plenty of room. But now, they say they won't go past the end state maintenance sign, so all those people out there are not gonna have trash picked up.
Is that something you could?
Well, it.
Um, other than that, I just want to thank staff, thank Justin, Christopher, Mike, and everybody that's worked hard on this budget. Um, like Mr. Durbin, what he does, you know, to help make sure that everything goes smoothly and, and we do, uh, what we're supposed to do. Good to see Tammy here tonight, and thank you for your budget and your hard work.
Very much.
And, uh, I think that, uh, it'd be okay if I announced that there are ribbon cutting at the baseball field tomorrow night, six-thirty for the, for the new baseball lights, are there a game?
There is a game, the JV starts earlier that evening, then at six-thirty they end, we'll do the ribbon cutting, get the lights on, the varsity plays, and we'll have hot dogs and food and a drink for you guys, so stay and enjoy the game with the community.
All right, good deal. Look, look forward to hopefully a lot of the citizens come out and support our, our youth, um.
And June eleventh, and we invite you all to the ribbon cutting for the new gym and classroom area, we'd love to have you down there at four o'clock.
All right, sounds good. Um, other than that, just, um, thank all the staff and, uh, that's working hard to, uh, for the citizens of the county and, you know, appreciate all the prayers for, for our family, you know, that's the citizens that feel the hunger hard to be prayed to be heard right now. Hard to see them. A brother coupled with the experience that's gotten on our family. We, uh, we definitely got you back, make part, part six back, and, uh, with that being said, you know.
Thank you. Okay, uh, listen, one last, the, uh, do want to thank the Planning Commission for coming and the hard work they've done. Uh, thank Senator Stanley for coming to the meeting tonight, giving the award, well-deserved, Terry Woods. Um, do thank the staff for all your work, uh, Mike and Crystal and Justin and Mr. Durbin for what you do for us and all the hard-working employees we have in the county. And thank you, Tammy, as well, for coming. Greg, we do appreciate you coming by phone, it's, it's been a, you know, Mr. Moore's went through a lot, which I've, uh, stood with us and family does come first, but we do appreciate what you're doing and we'll keep hearing our prayers. And thank you, uh, Budget.
Thank you, Joe.
Budget Committee, Mr. Early, Mr. Moore, and Justin, everybody putting together a good budget and, uh, getting a suit issued this next budget. And, uh, after that, that's all I have, we'll go to, uh, County Administration comments. Mr. Watson?
I'll just bring up a couple items here, I thought it was great for, uh, our Senator to be able to come here and present an award to a, uh, a, uh, employee that, uh, has had the opportunity retire after many years of service. Uh, it's a tough job, I mean, it's one of those jobs that I've always said that if I'm not here and I'm complaining, you're probably not doing your job. Okay, and, uh, he's done a real good job, and has made a, a real, uh, uh, improvement to, uh, Carroll County, I feel. And Mr. Stanley, uh, Senator and his staff has been great to work with. Uh, another item, uh, I will be able to make a ribbon cutting tomorrow, I plan on attending the, uh, a couple of transportation board sales tomorrow. So, uh, I'm gonna miss out on that and just want to stay, uh, thank all the staff and, and the board. Uh, I appreciate all that everyone does, it, uh, uh, really helps me, so, thank you very much. That's all I have.
The county attorney comments?
Uh, nothing, uh, Mr. Chairman, other than to say that it, it is, uh, impressive to see how smoothly the budget process ran this year and it's become more and more of a, of a systemized process in Carroll County to have a, have a regimental, uh, process that you're, um, you're setting your calendar well ahead of time, you're setting your taxes very well ahead of your time, you're getting, um, you're getting to where you need to be in, in the school manner, and that's, um, all is appreciated from, from my perspective. So, just, uh, well done, it's good to see that you have got the systems in place.
All right, uh, after that, I'll entertain a motion for enjoyment. Okay, start the voting, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, start the voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes.